Good evening, welcome to tonight's Selectmen's Meeting of July 28th, 2020. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live and taped by Knoll Community Media. Tonight's meeting started with an executive session where we met with our legal counsel, discussed a couple matters regarding the airport, and now we'll begin our open session with a pledge allegiance to the flag and a moment of silent reflection as we normally conduct our meetings. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight, we have one formal appointment, that's with Mr. Halkiotis, Planning and Economic Development Director regarding Open Space Recreation Plan and Conservation Restriction for the St. Street Lots off of Moore Street for approval by the Board. Mr. Halkiotis, floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. I'm pleased to join you tonight to hopefully wrap up one project, the Open Space and Recreation Plan, and check off a milestone on another project to kind of complete the acquisition of the property off of Moore Street at the end of the St. Streets. We started working on the Open Space and Recreation Plan in 2018. I was joined by Tom Staff, Assistant Planner Patrick DeShane's, Recreation Director Travis Farley, Retired Conservation Agent Al Getz, and with committee members representing the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, Cheryl Rogers representing Conservation, Debbie Homewood representing the Planning Board, and Citizens at Large Heather Owens, who served as the Chair of our Working Group, and Tom Lorenz. We had several meetings. We applied for and received a $30,000 grant from the state as part of the Community Compact Program. We used that money to pay a consultant who was our Regional Planning Agency, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, to help us in the update of the plan. The main reason why we used the Metropolitan Area Planning Council was because they had actually done the 2010 Open Space and Recreation Plan, had many of the maps and a lot of the parts of the plan that didn't change much, like the history of the town. And so, we thought that was a good choice to work with the Regional Planning Agency. We started off the process by reviewing the accomplishments, things that had been completed that were in the action plan from the 2010 plan, and then we focused on goals and objectives for this plan. The state has a very prescriptive approach to the development of Open Space and Recreation Plans, and they require all the communities to complete certain elements of the plan. They have to start with history, look at the town's land use, and so forth. The Open Space and Recreation Plan is a tremendous resource. It holds a lot of statistics and information about the town, and it has a series of really good maps. And so, we find ourselves going back and using the plan as a resource if we're looking for certain information. It provides us with a roadmap for what the town would like to see in the future with respect to open space, conservation land, and recreation. We conducted a public opinion survey as part of the planning process, and we had about 472 responses to the survey. We got a lot of good information from the survey, and it kind of confirmed some of the things that we thought. One of the biggest problems is that unfortunately, a lot of the residents don't know where a lot of the open space and conservation land is, and that was one of the things that came out of that public opinion survey. Unfortunately, that's not a big problem to solve. Through better communication and using the town's website, we'll be able to try to get the word out, producing more maps, and we've had a lot of help from the Trails Committee, who's already taken the lead on that. We ended up, we had a public workshop, and we had several people, residents attend. The benefits to having an approved Open Space and Recreation Plan, it enables a town to apply for certain environmentally related grants. We submitted the plan to the State Department of Conservation Services, who has to review and approve it, and they've given it tentative approval. They sent it back with a few small things for us to follow up on, and we've pretty much finished up that work. The plan requires the vote of approval from the Board of Selectmen and a recommendation for approval by the Planning Board. You probably read in the paper last month, we had a meeting with the Planning Board and had a very similar discussion, and the Planning Board unanimously voted to recommend approval of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. One of the things that came out of the last meeting that we had, when we talked about how the plan was going to be implemented, the committee felt that there should be an ongoing effort made to implement the recommendations, and they made a vote to recommend that the Board of Selectmen establish a working committee that can go over the recommendations from the plan and work with staff to try to get those recommendations in place to work on implementing the plan. Excuse me, little sun on my face, sorry. So, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions. We sent it to you in digital form and sent some of the chapters. It's a lengthy document, and it was a hard thing to try to put in front of you with a lot of information, and so, we'd be glad to answer any questions. Tonight, joining me is Patrick DeShane's, the Assistant Planner, and Travis Farley.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, gentlemen. Any members have any questions or comments? Mr. Hajar? David, you're muted.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, this is an excellent document. I read through it. Like the last one, which was good, the problem was we needed any implementation with the last one. So, the key is follow-through, as far as I'm concerned, you guys, and certainly, the team has put in an awful lot of work to develop something very useful for the town that can be followed, but now we need to do the other end, and it's actually implemented. Also, Patrick was kind enough to give me today copies of Map 7 and 8 that showed a lot of the information referenced, which is great. I would urge my colleagues, if they want to see that, to also get a copy. The Working Group that you're talking about, Paul, is that the group that would develop some sort of prioritization of all these, because we can't do everything in year one? And certainly, while you have talked about things that are ongoing versus midterm versus short term, I mean, ongoing almost seems to be, those should be at the top of the list because they're already being done, versus projects that we want to attempt to implement, which would be the short term, midterm. Would you expect that Working Group to make recommendations on some sort of prioritization of what do we want to accomplish under each goal for a second, third, fourth, and fifth?
We really weren't anticipating and didn't have volunteers to continue to work on the implementation of the plan. This group put in their time, and in some cases, we had some residents that had never served on a town board committee, and this was a good indoctrination to serving the town. So, right now, we don't have a game plan, and without a clear plan of who is going to be responsible for doing the prioritization and the implementation, we'll work with the existing town boards and committees, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, the Trails Committee, on what we should work on. Obviously, as you said, the things that are ongoing, we're going to hopefully finish those up, but the other priorities, we will be looking for policy direction from the elected and volunteer boards and committees. And it was this discussion at our last meeting that led the committee to unanimously vote to recommend to the Board of Selectmen to create another body to take it forward. The last thing that I wanted to mention about implementation is that fortunately, we are closing in on hiring an environmental planner, and built into the job description for that position is to work on the implementation of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. And so, we're hoping to have someone on board within the next month, and this is going to be one of the priorities that we're hoping they're going to be able to work on.
Thank you, Paul. I'm kind of excited to have that person on board and working on things year-round as well. So, I want to say, Mr. Chairman, I do agree that it should be, I wouldn't say an overly large body, but a small body that should try to develop some sort of prioritization of these short-term projects, so that we know which ones we want to try to tackle first. That doesn't mean it can never change, but we can't work on them all at the same time, so there needs to be some lead on what we're going to accomplish over the next few years and what we might want to do. Similar to what Tony does with the Capital Min, Capital Plan, and what Tom Maloney do is, you have all these things, you know, one year, so they spread it over the over a five or six-year period, and they sort of identify where the funding is coming on all that. I sort of see this in the same manner as, other than the ongoing, we should develop something similar so that we're not spinning on wheels and trying to decide which one to do first in 2021, 2022, et cetera. So, that's my suggestion, Mr. Chairman. But otherwise, I'm very happy with it, and I thank the entire team led by Paul and Paul. So, thank you both.
Hi. This is Don Hugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Halkiotis, for all the work you've done on this plan. Would you agree that this concept of an Open Space Recreation Plan is an old concept with the Planning Board? It's been done for many, many years, and it's just not updated over the years, correct?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And so, in the past, it was special interest groups, very often neighborhood groups, that brought the issues forward, but this new, this new concept is a very good idea. In addition to this new concept, I've seen, having served on the first year of the Community Preservation Committee, that that committee will be a great forum too, for getting a lot of these projects done. So, I think that, I think that the idea of, Mr. Hajar's idea of getting more done will be done through this new idea committee and the money from the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Lang?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul and Pat, this is a really tremendous document. It's very impressive and it's really comprehensive, so I commend you. I commend the committee that worked on it. Just add a quick question. So, an approved plan makes us the town eligible for certain grants. Could you explain quickly the land grants and the park grants and how that might aid us in acquiring land?
So, the state rolls out grant programs periodically. Some are grant programs that are unveiled annually, and we applied, it seems like, a long time ago for a park grant, and we were requesting funding to retain a landscape architect to design a waterfront park for the St. Street property. We actually have it covered already with funding that was approved at town meeting as part of the acquisition of the property, so we already have the money to hire the landscape architect. But when the opportunity arose to apply for a grant, very similar to the grant funding that we got to update the Open Space and Recreation Plan, we had already had the town meeting money in place, but we got a grant so that we didn't have to spend it. When these grant programs are enrolled, we look at them and see if there's any projects that are worth applying for. These grants, these types of environmental grants include grants to purchase water supply protection land, grants to build parks and playgrounds, and this, I think there's about half a dozen of them that the state has. And so, you know, this really does put us in a good position to be able to jump on a grant application and be eligible, receive the funding if, when the plan's all finalized.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well done, Mr. Halkiotis and Mr. DeShane. Really, it's a, it's a, it's a fine plan. I liked, I enjoyed reading it. I think it's thorough. I was happy to see our own Steve Washburn cited in one of the footnotes. He's the Chairman of the Conservation Commission, and has done quite a bit of work on analysis of green space in various localities, so that was gratifying. See, I also know, this, by the way, the, you mentioned, one case, improving linkages between open space parcels, which shows a sort of awareness of the Great Emerald Necklace in Boston by Frederick Law Olmsted, so I think that's probably a good idea. I know we'll be talking at length about individual parcels that you mentioned here, or tracts of land that the town might be interested in borrowing, and I know there'll be some robust discussion on this parcel or that parcel and what purpose we'll put them to, but overall, I think you've included quite a bit here. I think it's really well done. I noticed you also included in Funding Sources, the Chapter 90, never would have thought of it, but you're right. I mean, we can, that's road money, and since we do supplement Chapter 90 with a lot of our own money, it gives us some latitude to do things that otherwise we might not have done because of the plan we have here. So, anyway, good job, really happy, look forward to working with your buddy on it as we go forward in the next, in the next five to 10 years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Halkiotis, sounds like we've got a unanimous vote to support this. Looking through your documents, I did see the approval for the deed restriction that we're going to talk about next, that you had actually suggested, specific language. What actions do you need on submitting the plan? Does the vote to approve?
A vote to approve, and that memorialized in a letter, and that will be submitted to the state along with a very similar letter from the Planning Board announcing their vote on the plan.
Motion. Motion to send the letter of support.
Second on the motion?
On the plan as prepared and submitted by Mr. Halkiotis and company at all. Is there a second? May it second it?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Lang?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. No amaze. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Mr. Halkiotis, you want to discuss that?
Yeah, I want to thank you first for that vote and tell you that I enjoyed working on the Open Space and Recreation Plan. This is the kind of planning that I love, and this is why I went into the planning field, working on ways to protect the environment and places for people to go and enjoy and recreate. And so, it was a gratifying project to work on, and I appreciate the help from the staff, from MAPC, and from our volunteer committee. The next item on the agenda that I'd like to discuss that's interconnected with this is the conservation restriction for what we refer to as the St. Lot. It's actually off of Moore Street, but at the end of the three St. Streets in South Norwood. When land is purchased for conservation utilizing community preservation funds, the State Community Preservation Act requires that a conservation restriction be placed on that property. We included language in the article to acquire the property that made reference to a future conservation restriction. These restrictions are, have to follow a certain format that the State Division of Conservation Services has to review and approve the conservation restriction. And if, this will sound kind of strange to a lot of people, but under law, the owner of the property cannot be holder of the conservation restriction. The reason why is that the restriction in simple terms, it explains in writing what uses can take place on that property and what uses cannot take place on the property. And if the owner of the property is put in a position where they're policing themselves, it sometimes doesn't work out well. And so, I learned a long time ago, back in the 1980s, about conservation restrictions, and some of you, Helen might recall, Joel Lerner from the state, explained that to me, that, you know, it has to be a separate entity. So, I went out and I contacted two private nonprofit organizations that do this kind of thing, and one was the Naperville Watershed Association. They considered it and they passed on it. And so, I went to another organization that I had worked with in the past, the Wildlands Trust Incorporated, and they're out of Plymouth. They hold a number of conservation restrictions for communities in southeastern Mass. This is their first one in our region, and their Board of Directors unanimously voted to agree to hold the conservation restriction. By agreeing to that and committing to that, they're saying that they will in perpetuity enforce the terms of those restrictions. So, if, say for some reason, a neighbor was dumping grass clippings and leaves onto the conservation property, or if, say, some kids are riding minibikes around the conservation property, which is a violation, they would be the ones that have to come in and enforce it. And in some cases, that could mean going to court to enforce the restriction. So, in order to honor that commitment, in some cases, it would cost the money. And so, they've established a fee of $10,000 to hold the conservation restriction. We also included in the land acquisition article for the St. Street property, the $10,000 for the restriction, because we knew that was probably what it was going to be, and I had already kind of pre-negotiated some of that. So, as a matter of law, on the Chapter 148, 184 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth, they have agreed to hold the conservation restriction for us. This restriction has been reviewed already by the State Division of Conservation Services. There's an attorney there that all as they do is they review these as they come across their desk, and it's been given preliminary approval. It's also been given preliminary approval by the Wildlands Trust, because they voted to hold it. And Town Council David DeLuca has reviewed and approved the conservation restriction. And so, I thought that we are now ready to go forward and get the final approvals from the Board of Selectmen and from the Conservation Commission. In a conversation with my contact at the Wildlands Trust today, we realized that we probably need to add a little bit additional language to clarify that we currently have, I think, three easements on that property. These are old easements, water and sewer easements from the early 1960s, and they were never really recorded on the property when we bought it. So, there was kind of a, in the chain, a title that was missing, and we thought the best approach would be for the town to go forward and purchase the property, then once we own the property, we could record a plan that shows these easements. The Engineering Department Assistant Town Engineer Andy Murphy has prepared a plan that can be recorded at Land Court to show those easements, and one of the final details that I think we need to take care of is to reference those clearly in the conservation restriction. And so, I thought that we would be 100% ready tonight to ask the Board to sign it, but I think I need to go back one more time and get that language in there, send it to Town Council to review and approve, back to the state to get a nod from them, and then I'd like to come back to the Board to request a final vote, or to cover it administratively with a recommendation from Town Council after final review, to recommend to the Board to administratively sign the document. The document is then finalized and is reported at the Registry of Deeds, and in this case, at Land Court. I'd be glad to answer any questions that the Board may have about the conservation restriction.
One question, Paul. The $10,000 you mentioned, is that one time or is there an ongoing fee as well?
It's a one-time fee.
Thank you. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Halkiotis, at this time, I'd like to thank you and Mr. DeShane for your years and hours of work put on this project. This is a project that started over 30 years ago by Patty Bailey, and it's finally coming to life. And without you and Mr. DeShane helping us, we never would have been able to get this done. You were kind, you were strong, you were forceful, and I, and it's going to save the quality of life in the area, and this will give over 800 feet on the Naperville River and almost 400 feet on Horse Brook for all the people of Norwood to use. Your plans include a platform so people in wheelchairs will be able to go in their wheelchair to the edge of the river and to look at the flow of the water from a wheelchair, and how good can that get? That's, and all the people playing ball down at the school will be in excellent, excellent protection, the people living there. So, I think that if we made a motion, I'd like to make a motion, that we sign it with the condition that Council approves the addition, and if Council approves it, then it becomes a recordable plan and we can record it then. How does the Board feel about that? So, he doesn't have to come back and spend more time, because we're only meeting every two weeks.
Mr. Hajar?
I'll second that motion. I think what Mr. Halkiotis was talking about is nothing that's going to change the intent of what we're trying, for God's sake, that property. We all know what we want to do, and if he needs a little bit more time to refine the language, that's fine, so I'm in favor of, you know, approving on the condition that we get the final document for signature some later date.
Thank you. Just let me ask to make sure we're on safe ground here. Mr. Halkiotis, you don't see any reason why you need to wait and have all the eyes done? Do you think this motion is fine for your purposes?
I think it will work, and we'll make sure that we have a memo from Town Council saying that he's given a final review to it.
Mr. Maloney, did I see your hand?
No, you asked the question. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Halkiotis, if that's the case, and if we're going to take a motion, is there need for us to have the formal language in our minutes that you provided on this readout? The approval for conservation restriction of the Norwood Board of Selectmen?
I think that would be fine.
All right. Let me just read this for the record then, and it'll be part of the motion, that we approve the foregoing conservation restriction from the town of Norwood, acting by and through its Conservation Commission, Toulatlands Trust, Inc., in public interest pursuant to Section 32 of Chapter 184 of the Massachusetts General Laws, and hereby approve the foregoing conservation restriction. Furthermore, we hereby certify that the grant of the foregoing conservation restriction is valid exercise of authority of the Norwood Conservation Commission pursuant to Section HC of Chapter 40 of the Massachusetts General Laws. That's out of Mrs. Donahue's motion. To final approval of the final language by Town Council. Anything further on the motion? Mr. Lang?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. That's also a unanimous vote in support. Yeah, you're on a roll, Mr. Halkiotis. You better quit now.
Thank you, and I want to thank Mrs. Donahue for her kind words. Moving forward, we will be having an inclusive process in the park design. We'll work with the South Norwood Neighborhood Association, with the Trails Commission, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, to come up with a great design for a fantastic waterfront park for the town that'll be handicapped accessible, and I look forward to coming back and discussing that with you at a future date. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat and Travis, for your interest as well. Thank you. All right, well, move on then to our next matter, business of the new business, which was, we had spoken about having some issues come up at our board meetings over the next several meetings. One of them was financial review. Decided that financial, speaking with the manager, that financial review was pretty intense, pretty broad to take up at one meeting, so we're kind of going to put it into little small sections, elements of the financial policies of the town and concerns, and have them reviewed separately. And tonight, we put on the agenda to discuss OPEB, an update on the OPEB matter, and Mr. Mazuko, you'll take that, please.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to do a quick screen share here. I'll have a brief presentation for the Board, just to facilitate some talking points, and go ahead and get this started. So, the Board will notice that this is similar to a presentation we did a little over a year and a half ago, discussing OPEB funding in Gatsby, and just a quick review for folks at home who are not necessarily as familiar with OPEB. But OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. It's primarily our liability for retiree healthcare. It's shared by every city in town in Massachusetts and the Commonwealth itself. It's shared by every city and town in Massachusetts and the Commonwealth itself. As I said, it refers to the liability on our books for this benefit, which is legally mandated by law in Massachusetts. And as I said, it's a legal obligation similar to the pension fund. Many years, including Norwood, fund on a pay-as-you-go basis. So that means every year, we get a bill for retiree healthcare, we pay the bill. The Government Accounting Standards Board has been changing reporting requirements by requiring us to report the full liability for our OPEB liability. And further changes than Gatsby have reported have required us to change some requirements. We now show that full burden of this liability or the total amount we would owe on our books. And I'm going to skip ahead here to the genesis of tonight's discussion. So that's our brief overview of what OPEB is. We did a much lengthier presentation about a year and a half ago. So where have we been the last five or six years in terms of our OPEB funding? If you look at your screen, you'll notice the column that says Original Appropriation, that's the amount we have put in the budget that annually gets contributed to the OPEB fund. Additional investment is money that we transferred at the end of the year. What we've typically been doing, and every community has a slightly different approach, is any money that's left in the health insurance budget in a given year will transfer to the OPEB trust fund. And then, of course, our interest earnings are included. So you'll see, when we started in 20, excuse me, near my screen, 2014, our first appropriation, we had about $250,000 in the OPEB fund. Now, with the 2020 additions, the total amount is $3.1 million. So we're making progress every year towards growing our fund balance, which is a positive thing. As I've said before, the rating agencies are now more looking at your management approach to OPEB rather than just the dollar amount that's sitting in the fund. Just some information on how our liability looks in a given year, so these, I believe, are June numbers. We pay about $337,000 a month for retiree healthcare, and we pay about $31,000 a month in retiree dental care. Now, those amounts are, they do vary based on who's retired, what plans they're on. Anyone who is under 65 that retires is on a full regular health insurance plan, and anyone over 65 is on a Medicare supplement plan. The cost drops quite a bit for those. So in a given year, our cash outlay for retiree health and dental benefits is about $4.1 million. That goes up and down with the cost of health insurance. Of course, it varies based on what our actual census is. But we spend about $4 million a year directly in annual retiree costs for just health insurance. That's not the pension fund. The required fund balance, to have the fund balance fully funded, our OPEB liability every year would be, based on today's numbers, roughly $80 million. That's a ballpark figure. Actuaries get paid lots of money to tell you exactly what the true number would be. So while that $3.1 million where we've built up in our trust fund looks good, that trust fund wouldn't stop building until we hit right around the $80 million mark. At that point, you could probably start less than then, but at that point, once you're fully funded in OPEB, and we're decades out, the money in the fund would be covering your retiree healthcare costs. We would then be able to take that cost completely out of the budget and off the burden of the taxpayers because we've put enough money in a trust fund to fund that cost. Similar to how when we're fully funded with our pension system, our pension obligation will drop precipitously. We spend around $6 million a year on our pension system, and once we're fully funded with that, and we need to make sure that we're fully funded beyond the point where a change in the market could get us down below being fully funded, several million dollars would be freed up. The current plan being for most cities and towns, once their pension obligation is fully funded, you then have the real amount of money in your budget to start making progress on your OPEB trust fund. And then eventually, once both of those are fully funded, the taxpayers will be on the hook for millions of dollars less per year. The benefit to starting early with OPEB, as you can see, we do generate some earnings every year in interest. It is in a proper trust fund, so we have a decent rate of return consistent on what we're allowed to invest in through state statute. So some of the challenges and opportunities, the general fund contribution has remained flat at about $250,000 a year. We haven't really been able to increase that. We've been averaging a surplus addition of about $171,000 a year. The interest income on our OPEB fund is about $55,000 a year on average. We do need to begin including the cost of any employees added to the budget in the OPEB trust line as a separate line that was part of our financial policies. It's something we haven't quite made progress on, but the idea being that if we're adding a benefit package that we don't already have, we should be adding the cost or getting to that full cost over the course of five years for their OPEB liability so that we're not just adding to our liability year in and year out. We do need to begin costing the full utility responsibility for OPEB, and we need to make sure that our accounting is clear as we do our, move towards our enterprise fund accounting, that the money we're raising from utility-related costs pays for the utility-related share of OPEB and goes into the OPEB fund. Now, we take costs for those items in the budget, and you can make an argument that indirectly it all ends up in the same place, but it doesn't do it directly. And really, for good accounting practices, it should do directly with both the light department and water sewer. You do have the ability to get to what they're, they don't use the term ARC or Annual Required Contribution is anymore, but they use a similar term. I think it's AAC. So we could get to that point faster for water and sewer and light. More important, though, for light, because the light department has its credit rating separately, as required by law for the town, and their credit rating did, of course, go down last year, and that will drag the town's rating down. Water and sewer, while heavily leveraged, as common with any water and sewer utility throughout the country, is factored into the town's ordinary credit rate. So presenting their books, if you will, separately doesn't necessarily have any benefit on credit ratings and therefore borrowing costs. However, we're going to want to make sure that water and sewer bears its cost and electric utility bears its cost, and that we're clear about the accounting. And then I figured I'd open it up for a discussion of any other funding opportunities or questions the board had. We had gone through this in great detail about a year and a half ago, so I wanted to update you on where we are. Just briefly on the funding opportunities, every town is funding OPEB a little differently. Some towns do it as we do with what's left in their health insurance budget, general fund appropriations. Some towns take 10% of their free cash every year, no matter what. The first 10% goes into it. Some towns have adopted specific revenue streams for OPEB. I think there's one or two towns that may have done the meals tax for that. We've, of course, already done the meals tax. There's been discussions as certain communities adopt transfer taxes. They're popular down the Cape, and they usually go into affordable housing, but I know there's a couple of towns out there looking at whether or not they could adopt that and have that revenue stream go to OPEB. The legislature hasn't necessarily loved the idea of something like that, but that's always a possibility as well for OPEB funding. And I'll hold it there and take any questions or comments or facilitating discussion the board would like to have.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things, Mr. Mizuko. Very well, I think we've covered a lot of this information before, and it's still, it's great to be refreshed on it. I noticed, then, that our annual contribution or annual expenses is about $4 million. Fully funded, we would be at $80 million. Therefore, the state must be expecting you to use about 5% of the total in a given year. So we've got a long way to go because those numbers will increase over time. It probably would behoove us in the next budget cycle to consider increasing that annual contribution. I know we've talked about it, 250 for a while plus additional sources of income. But I had one question about the plan, about the program itself. Is there any way that employees can contribute to OPEB? Maybe I'm thinking of the wrong thing. I'm thinking of a 401K type of thing, or someone who they can contribute to help.
So this is actually a battle I've had with half the labor attorneys in the state and the MMA as well. There's, some towns have adopted where employees pay $5 a week or $10 a week or something into the town's OPEB trust fund. That's in collective bargaining agreements. Now, the challenge with the collective bargaining agreement is what you put in there isn't necessarily what the law says. And the state has no statutory framework whatsoever for employee contributions to an OPEB fund. So you run into questions of who owns that money, both short-term and long-term, whereas the pension system is well-established in state law. Now, a particular concern is, under the law in Massachusetts, a city or town has to pay at least 50% of somebody's healthcare, whether they're a current employer or retiree. That's the law for all 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, as well as the state itself. If you had an employee contributing to an OPEB trust fund, the town is then using that money to fund its OPEB liability. That employee, if you're at a 50-50 split after contributing when they retire, could make an argument that they're actually paying more, or the town is paying less than its minimum required for OPEB. And that may be an academic argument, but there is nothing in state law that references it. So if we were even able to get some agreement on something like that, without a statutory framework to back that up, we'd be exposing ourselves to a huge liability. More and more cities and towns have come around to the idea that it's great to look down that road, but there is nothing in the law that establishes that. There's a number of tax questions that aren't really explained in federal law as well, or federal policy, about what is that contribution? So it's a contribution by an employee to a future benefit that's required by state law. The pension system, we all know what that is. Retiree healthcare, it really hasn't been worked out. I think, long-term, that's an avenue that would be helpful. That being said, until the state's willing to look at changing the structure of its retiree laws, because everything we do is so strictly set by statute, there's simply no law there. We will be going on our own, creating this framework, asking for contributions, negotiating contributions, likely giving something else up. And then we could find ourselves liable for a lot of money at the end of the day because there's simply no body of law that will back up wanting to do something like that, even though it's, on the surface, a very good idea. We need the state to actually have some sort of a framework to allow that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hajar?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, interesting concept. One of the things I'm hoping that we get to, Tony, is maybe a list of all the different funds that we're trying to tackle over the next few years. I mean, we have the OPEB fund, we have the pension fund, the electrical depreciation or rate stabilization, we're trying to do something with water and sewer. So maybe just get an entire list of what we're looking at, and I know we want to pick them one at a time, but knowing exactly all the ones that we're trying to deal with would be helpful. Number two, one of the things that we had talked about in the past was focusing our attention on one or two, and then accomplish that one, then move on to the other one. So like, we had talked about really trying to pay, get fully funded with the pension fund as quickly as possible, and then be able to dump that annual money into OPEB. And then, you know, that challenge. And so I would like to go with that effort. I would really like to see what the pension fund looks like today, or when we get the next report. Look at what it would do to achieve full funding in less years than what they're talking about, where that money could come from, and then be able to say, okay, now we have a plan to tackle OPEB too. I was disappointed when Mr. Maloney talked about, I think at the last meeting, that we got gigged in the latest financial report on OPEB because it was so low. And then you referenced, well, we have a plan to show that this is how we are going to tackle it. So if we have to overtly say we're going to specifically tackle full funding of the pension fund, and then switch to taking that annual obligation or budget number and dumping it into OPEB as our way of tackling it, then I think that might be one avenue we could pursue that might appease the rating agencies, at least they'd see it in writing.
What your rating agencies are looking at with OPEB now is more that, are you trying to do something every year to make some progress? So, you know, we're never going to be able to say, next year, all right, great, we get an extra $2 million, let's just raise the OPEB number to $2 million. I agree with you. We should get the pension fund at 100%. And incidentally, we're in the low 80s, which is among the higher end for cities and towns in Massachusetts, so it's in very good shape. But once we're fully funded, then that's how we're going to really address OPEB. But the value of a dollar being put away today versus 20 or 30 years from now, we know we want that fund to grow. We also want to be able to show the rating agencies that we're making progress on OPEB, and having in writing what we're going to do is great, and that's helped us out in our last actuarial report. But if they look at it and they say, well, for six years, you've contributed the same dollar amount, that dollar amount we know is insufficient. You have a plan in 12 years to do something else, it looks like what we're presenting them is a placemaker. Now, that doesn't mean we need to go up $1 million next year, and we certainly wouldn't have that kind of revenue. But I think if we can look at any other avenues to start showing some increase every year where we can say, look, we are addressing the problem in addition to our long-term solution.
Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason that the pension fund is so well-funded is thanks to Mr. Robert Thornton, who was the former town clerk and accountant. He had great sight into the future and helped us get that established beautifully. Don't worry so much about ratings because we're talking about going from AAA to AA. It's not like going from B to C or C to D. We're still in great shape. What we have, I sincerely believe that what we have to do is put money toward this fund, but be careful that we don't impose too great a burden on the individual taxpayers who can only stand so much. We have to do this cautiously, and we can't just, we have to make sure that we protect homeowners and the business landowners when we fund this.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anything to add, Ms. Mizuko, or shall we move on? Ms. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mizuko, I appreciate the presentation, and most of the concerns or questions I had were covered through fellow selectmen. But I am interested, as Mr. Hajar stated, in the prioritization of funding different accounts and sort of how that would affect things like credit rating, which you touched upon. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. No, I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman, other than it's probably a good idea we can keep breaking these up into sort of smaller topics and updates over the next few months. You know, rather than having an hour and a half or two hours on one subject, it's sometimes better to take it in smaller chunks, although I'm certainly willing to talk about these.
Yeah, you do. Okay, we'll move on.
Of course you are.
All right. Next item on our new business is from Mary Lou Foellin, our town clerk. She's submitting in accordance with Chapter 431 of the Acts of 1960, a list of wardens, clerks, ballot box clerks, ballot box clerks, and independent election workers for appointment by the Board of Selectmen as for the upcoming elections. Motion to approve?
So moved.
The second, eight seconds. All in favor? Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, so it's a unanimous vote to approve those. Cemetery deeds for our board's approval and signatures. Motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor? Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue? Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So that's unanimous. Number four, Carolyn Brady, resident of Hartling Road, is submitting an application to use the town common bandstand for wedding photos and a first dance on Saturday, August 15, 20th, from 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Motion to approve?
And second, all in favor? Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue? Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's the unanimous approval. John Marcus, Community and Leadership Management for National Grid, submitting notification of gas main replacement projects. That's part of their ongoing safety projects, and there are quite several of them here. So let me give you the exact addresses for those who might be affected. These projects should be happening during July and August, and they include 16, number 16 to number 102 Rosemary Street, number 4 to 37 Morningside Drive, number 93 to 112 Garden Parkway, number 89 to 107 Wilson Street, number 83, Moore Street, number 8 to 25 Buckingham Road, and number 4 to 14 Avon Road. So it's going to be tough to get around town during July and August. That's information filed?
So moved.
Mr. Lane? Mr. Hajar?
I just had a question that, I know the answer is yes, but again, just for the public certification, Tony, this type of information gets coordinated with Mark Ryan and our road plans to ensure that if we had a road there, they're doing the work, that we just move on from that road until we're ready, right? Okay.
To the extent that we can, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue? Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That's filed. Ryan Melville, Deputy Executive Director of the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, notifying us of an advisory of on-premises liquor licenses to sell mixed drinks for off-premise consumption. Governor Baker signed the bill on July 20, 2020. It's effective immediately until the end of the emergency or February 28, 2021, whichever comes later. That's information filed as well. Comments? Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Number seven, Gilmere and Company, joint businesses now at Spice 655 Washington Street. They're submitting an application for a wine and malt beverage license. They're submitting an application for wine and malt beverage license to operate now with Spice at 655 Washington Street. That will require a public hearing.
Motion to set public hearing?
Second? Next, Mr. Lane? Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue? Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we'll have Mrs. Melville sit that up and have a future public hearing in that matter. Next item is one the chairman put on at our last meeting. We've, or a couple of meetings, we've had some little bit of discussions about the 150th birthday celebration for the town, which will come up in 2022. And trying to push the needle here, push things forward and make things start to get more serious, I made an announcement that I would name a steering committees that would be responsible for getting this job done. And tonight, I'm going to propose a committee of 17 to be known as a steering committee, or it could be the general committee. In the 1972, the Centennial Committee called it a general committee. But it'd be the group that gets together, chooses a chairman and/or co-chairman, whether or not there's an honorary chairman, other offices, they might be necessary, and gets to work on the basic planning and scheduling of events to really have a great year-long celebration of the town's 150th birthday. I know, looking back at the Centennial Committee's reports, hundreds of residents are likely to be involved in the subcommittees and the actual putting together of these events. But we need a small group, relatively small group, to be the core decision-makers and to make all these things jive and come together and be successful. So with that, I'm going to ask, and I have not spoken to 100% of these people, but I'm sure they're going to say yes. But subject to their approval, I'm going to appoint Mr. Maloney, Sue McClack, Jerry Miller, Alan Donahue, Patty Fanning, Frank Pachakowski, Bill O'Donnell, Bernie Cooper, Big Sibling Dunn, Katie Neal Rizzo, Reverend Veronica Trowell, Tony Mazuko, Mike Thornton, Jack Tolman, Timothy McDonough, Debbie Homewood, and Ann Haley. And as the first names to get this underway, I asked Mr. Maloney to be the acting chairman for the purposes of organization of this group.
You got it, brother.
We have a motion to support the chair's nominations.
So I'm moved.
I'm moved.
Seconded, thank you. Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and we're off to the races. Thank you very much. We're going to have a great celebration. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. Before we end it, I wanted to show the townspeople, this is a souvenir glass from the Centennial. This was given to me yesterday by the family of Brenda Babel. When Brenda Babel graduated from Chandler School, she started working through Town Hall. And she started on the switchboard, when the switchboard had plugs. This was over 42 years ago. And she was, it was like in that movie, Picnic, you plug it in and make the calls. Then she moved to the building department, where she created the system that's used for the building department today. All of the forms for the applications, all of the filing systems, and she worked there for over 42 years. This is what we're all about. This is so exciting that we're going to have a whole bunch of people helping out the town to celebrate. This steering committee is just a small part of the group. All the work's going to be done by the individual subcommittees, and we'll be there just to help. So we need people to get interested and to get with us and to support this so that we can make it a great celebration.
Thank you. And to that note, Mrs. Donahue had submitted to us a, quite a list of suggested events that might be considered by the committee. And we received a similar ideas of what the committee could be working on and how the celebration could unfold from Mr. John Hall. So we'll make sure that both of those emails are forwarded to the committee for their consideration. Next item is Tony Mazuko, General Manager. He submitted for the board's approval, three appointees to the Conservation Commission, Heather Miller, Carl Rockland, and Catherine Walsh. Mr. Mazuko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Subject to your approval, I'm pleased to appoint the following three folks to the Conservation Commission. I'll just briefly give you a description of each. Heather Miller, Heather is General Counsel and Policy Director for the Charles River Watershed Association. Previously was an attorney with the Conservation Law Foundation. She received her BS in political science in her JD from Georgetown University Law Center. She's also a member of the Sustainability Commission and a town meeting member. Carly Rockland is currently the Outreach Director for the Charles River Watershed Association. And she received her MS in her Masters in Natural Resources from the University of Michigan, as well as a certificate in Environmental Studies at Tufts University. She's also a town meeting member. And Catherine Walsh is the Associate Vice President of Fiscal and Management Service at Northeastern University, and previously was the Deputy Director of Capital Programs and Environmental Affairs at Massport. She received her JD from Suffolk University Law, and as well has a MS in Civil Engineering and a BS in Chemistry. So three outstanding candidates for the three positions on the Conservation Commission. Mr. Washburn, the chairman and I of that commission interviewed these three individuals. And Chris Capizio, who's the vice chair, was on a few of the interviews as well. We originally thought of going down to five on the Conservation Commission, but with a slate of great candidates like this, the chairman and I both feel that seven is a good number, and we'll be adding some serious weight to the Conservation Commission. And we're happy to see that. Three great Norwood residents, all with really strong backgrounds.
Yes, I might add that the information you gave us on these individuals, they're highly qualified, highly talented individuals. And it's great to see more and more new people. These aren't any old names that were moving from one committee to the other that we always did a good job for the town, but we almost had no other choice. Now we're getting new people, younger people, Mr. Lane, they're all coming forward. And it's great to see, as far as I'm concerned. Any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll accept the motion to approve. Mr. Hajar?
Well, I was going to move to approve, but I also just wanted to compliment Tony and his small team for getting really outstanding, qualified individuals that should be able to serve this town for a while going forward. So yes, definitely in favor. So I move to approve.
Thank you. And Mr. Maloney?
I'll second it and on the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just quickly, Mr. Mazuko, so these three will be joining us, Mr. Geer, Mr. Bamber, Mr. Washburn, and Ms. Capizio, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
That's a strong board, I like that. That'll be good. Thank you. Pleased to endorse these three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, we'll take a vote on that matter. Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, the board confirms your appointments, Mr. Mazuko.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
That concludes our new business. We'll move on to other items of unfinished business. The town of Norwood wireless telecommunications regulations, that started some time ago. We already proved a similar set as light commissioners. This has to do with protecting the town's position in these matters. Who's going to take this? Mr. Mazuko, Mr. Hajar?
As the boards aware, a final version of the wireless telecommunications regulations before you, credit to Mr. Hajar for an enormous amount of work he has put into this. The final regulations that are before you have been approved by both the Light Department Council and Town Council.
Would you like to add anything, Mr. Hajar, or it's pretty straightforward?
No, pretty straightforward.
Also, thank you for your work, and Mr. Mazuko. And it's one of those technical things, but it gets done. And when you don't have to do it and just get to sit back and read it, it's great. And Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank Mr. Mazuko and Mr. Hajar for their work on this. I have read it through. And I know we're in a little bit of uncharted waters here. And the big thing is if we find that the regulations in some way are defective or overly onerous or something like that, we can always change them. But I think everything I see in here is pretty reasonable. You know, knowing as little as I do about the matter, I think they're pretty reasonable. And so I again, want to thank, I want to thank my two friends for working on it, especially Mr. Hajar, who's so very good at the detail stuff and the technical stuff, because that was his business. Good job, happy to support.
Agree with you all, wholeheartedly. Well, anything further? Now I'll take a vote. Motion to approve the telecommunications regulations as submitted. Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that's a unanimous vote again. Next item, unfinished business is the AVCC submitting final approval of Norwood Lodge, BPO Elks, 1124, change of manager to Steve Vitale. That's information filed. All in favor, Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, that is filed. We'll move on to memoranda, the chief, William Brooks III, North Police Department, submitted his monthly report and activity. More questions?
Information filed.
Comments, we'll file that. Mr. Lane?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hajar?
Just want to make a couple of comments about the report. First, I compliment the chief, I'm sure he worked with Tony as well and some others in the police department, in strengthening the policies regarding force. I know it's a big issue around the country. I commend the chief for looking and examining his own agency and finding where he thought he could strengthen it. So I commend him for doing that. No one pushed him to do it, and that's great to see. There's another page on where he talks, another section, he talks about a report on the training unit. I think for quite some time now, we've all been pushing for making sure, training, 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 and as we see, this is one of the core things around the country. But Chief Brooke and his team have been doing it for a long time. So again, I commend them for not just doing the training, but actually documenting what's going on. It's a big help to everyone that's trying to understand what it is. Also, the last thing he had, Mr. Mazuko, you might be able to help us with this. He said he spoke to residents on Brand Street where they have an access road about speeding and that the issues would be reviewed by the Traffic Safety Committee. So that's an ongoing issue that'll come back before us. If there are any recommendations, there may not be, but...
There are a couple of speeding and speed limit issues we're looking at, and something will be coming before the board within the next couple of weeks on that.
Let me give my compliments for an outstanding report as usual.
Okay, Mr. Maloney? Yeah, your mic's off, Mr. Maloney?
If the selectman talks and his microphone is muted, he doesn't say anything. It's a really good report. I noticed, by the way, Mr. Hajar's point in the first paragraph here too, that the new policies regarding force and the strength, really the strengthening thereof, was propagated by the command staff and agreed to by both unions. So it's just more evidence of the cooperative spirit that leadership and the unions have in our police department of town here. I think they did a good job on it. And want to thank the chief and everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you. So no further comments, we'll take a vote to file's information. Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We'll now move on to the next item under memoranda, Norfolk County Commissioners Office submitting a copy of their correspondence to the assessors, notifying them to assess the sum of $237,249.72 on inhabitants of the town of Norwood as their portion of the county. That's pretty much right in line with the number we use in budget times, so there's no negatives beyond what we already expected on that. Information to file?
So moved.
All in favor, Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Diane Epic, 35 Wilson Street, submitting a correspondence she sent to the treasurer regarding flexibility on tax bills. And I, just for the board's information, the treasurer did submit a response to the woman today on the 27th of this year. So he has responded to her inquiries and concerns. I think for other, any questions, comments? Otherwise, we'll file. Mr. Hajar?
Well, I think one of the key aspects, because she states something that I know is not true, and that is that the town somehow didn't identify the 29th as the date rather than the 30th. And on the town's website, under the treasurer collector, I know you definitely can't see this, but it has the date of the 29th. And that's what it was up there, since the board voted acceptance on what the state allowed us to do, I think was in May. So it was done, we did all these mobile calls that were sent out. There was information that was sent out. So while I feel bad that the person submitted it, she says one day late, and there was a late fee or whatever, it's not that, it's not because the town didn't provide accurate information. So I want to make sure that the residents of Norwood know that, that it was on the town's website for the 29th, as we approved it sometime ago.
Yes, that's pointed out by Mr. Good in his response. I won't read you the whole letter, but trying to emphasize your own comments. I'll read part of it here. Additionally, a number of robotic calls were made alerting residents to the June 29 due date. The board of selectmen discussed the due date at meetings, waiting up to June 29. Where the article was printed, did not contact our office, the treasurer's office, to verify the correct due date. So just add emphasis to the comments, making Mr. Hajar. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the residents of the town of Norwood, this is a problem with the state law. There was another case in the past that a company paid like a huge water bill, and the check was lost, and it was proven that the check was lost, and the company still had to pay because of the law, because of the state law. They still had to pay the interest that was from the late tax bill. So please contact, if you feel strongly about this, please contact your state representative and tell them to fix the law.
Okay, thank you. So with that, did I take a vote on filing that? Mr. Lane? Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That takes us to the end of our formal business. If anyone has any other new business, I'll continue at this time. Otherwise, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Mr. Hajar?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, thank you. First, I want to commend Mark Ryan and his team for the great job that they did at the senior center parking lot. I know it was the first one of many. It looks great, I'm not sure all the striping is done, but they did a great job with that pavement and the curbing. It's always good that seniors get the first one, they deserve it, which is great. We always see, and more for the public's interest, we always see the letter from Dawn Fitzgerald regarding a planned, what the gentleman was going to have at the common, which was Norwood backs the blue. And because of some social media information that was forwarded to the group, he graciously backed out, because he didn't want to see Norwood get into any conflicts and whatever. So I commend Dawn for doing that. I think it's a shame that he had to do it. Norwood's been a great place to have any type of gatherings without incidents. And it doesn't matter what the issue has been. Unfortunately, this time it might have, or might not have been, but there were issues that were sent via email. And Mr. Fitzgerald, 20-year resident of the town, didn't want this town to have any issue, so he backed out of it. I think it's a shame he had to back out of it. I think a lot of people would support it. Not necessarily just because it was the police, but because we support all on that. So I'm sorry that he had to do that. My last comment is, and this doesn't, it's not meant to sound like I have a chip on my shoulder a chip on my shoulder regarding last week's paper opinion regarding, uh, organization or matters. I, I just want to say to the residents that might have read it but didn't see it, I would urge them to, uh, watch the video of the selectmen's meeting and that topic, a-again, to see exactly, uh, what I said. I'm not going to, uh, defend, uh, Mrs. Donahue, she's more, uh, capable of doing that herself. My whole point was to have conversations transparent and ahead of time so we can all agree and not talk about things two years later. So I commend Tony again for the three great picks, uh, tonight, um, as well his, you know, he wants a strategic organizational plan. These are all things that are important, and that's all that I'm asking for. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So those people around town who are aware of Facebook might have heard of the story of what happened up at Interclaw Street at Remarkable Cleanouts and how there was a young man that came in and there was a young lady who was working there. Now here is the part that only got picked up a little bit. The, the woman, young woman, Melissa Redica, who was working there, she is the granddaughter of Joe Perpra, who the ball field at Walsh School was named after. He was one of the founders of baseball in Norwood. Melissa hurt, said, told the young man, he said, may I play the piano? She said, sure. So he sat down. She filmed him on her telephone, then she went out and she put it on Facebook. Then the newspaper, then Channel Five or some channel picked up on it. But that is such a great thing that this whole thing started here in Norwood and it grew and grew and grew. And now a young person who has a great talent has a great piano to play on. But it just goes to show, little Melissa Redica here in Norwood and her wonderful boss, Mark, that owned the place, worked together and look what we did, look what they did, you know? So it, it's a nice, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anything else, Mr. Maloney? You're on, you're on mute again, sir.
You never sounded so good. There's been a car horn blowing outside my window, so I keep going to the mute. Um, just, just one thing to follow up on something Mr. Hajar was talking about. I actually went down to the common on Saturday around two o'clock. I was headed out of town, but I made a quick stop. And it was kind of interesting there that, um, Mrs. Fitzgerald had planned this rally and then for whatever reason it got canceled. But Chief Brooks was, was on the common that afternoon, deputy chief, Peter Kelly as well, a number of officers. And they were interacting with people. I must tell you, I think they were having a wonderful time. Uh, the people, the, the, the common was filled. Every table on the common was taken up by families. Uh, and, uh, the, the chief went around and the deputy chief and officers went around and said hello, talked with people about one thing or another. And I could tell you, Chief Brooks seemed to be having a wonderful time. So, so, uh, I, I know, I did talk to Dawn and I know she was a little disappointed that the, the thing didn't come off, but it really turned out to be a pretty good day anyway, almost unintentionally, but it was, it was terrific. And, uh, was happy to see so much, happy to see the police presence on the common, interacting with our citizens and having a good time as well. It was a very good Saturday on the common in Norwood, as it turned out. And secondly, I'm very sorry, but my mother passed away recently, and I know she'd be interested in this. The last, uh, surviving star of one of the greatest, her favorite picture, one of the greatest of all time, Gone With The Wind, passed away just a day or two ago. Olivia DeHafland was 104 years old. I thought she was already dead, but anyway, she died. And, uh, there it is. So they're all gone from common. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you for that update. Mrs. Donahue?
Since Chief, when Chief Brooks became chief, he started walking the beat all the time. And, and Peter Kelly has walked with him also and other officers. And so Norwood had more community policing here since he's been chief than we have in a long time, and we appreciate it. He even goes on the side streets.
Okay. Anything, Mr. Lane?
No, I would just, uh, say that, um, you know, one of the things about not being in school, uh, towards the end of the school year, my children really miss seeing the police officers and the fire department and people like that. And, um, having the common open the way that it is has afforded them the opportunity to, to have interactions. And so I really appreciate that. I'm glad we have that opportunity. And, uh, to that, um, point, I think, uh, Mr. Halke Otis's open space plan, it's really, uh, it's timely, just because I know that my family's been spending a lot more time outdoors and, and I think people really appreciate the vision over the next few years. And, um, so, uh, you know, it, it was great and I appreciate it.
Thank you. I just want to discuss budgets for a minute. Um, there's a lot of concern on a lot of, uh, towns, elected boards, the finance commission, I know all the selectmen, everyone is, uh, wants to make sure how the budget's going. Uh, the finance commission had a meeting recently, Mr. Mazuko attended, I attended, I think Mr. Hajar had attended, and they had State Representative Rogers on. Uh, and he discussed the process at the state level and what was happening. And I was very concerned by his comments because he noted that the formal session was, uh, concluding at the end of this month. And that he didn't see any way in which the state would have its budget put together. And that he was going to be supporting legislation to continue the session until October 1st. Last time, the state continued the budget till October 1st, there were severe ramifications for the communities across the Commonwealth. Norwood, uh, survived pretty well. And as it looks right now, I'll get into it, looks like we're going to survive again fairly well. It's the best information we have on a day-to-day basis. But my concern is that the legislature has to deal with their budget, they have to deal with the facts. They can't keep waiting for the, uh, federal government to do something. And if the news has to be bad, they have to tell us sooner than later. Because if it's bad, we need to make adjustments in our budgets, not so much Norwood, as I said, but other communities. And the longer they delay, the more difficult it gets for the towns, the communities of the Commonwealth to deal with it. At this point, the legislature did approve a three-month budget for the state. It's used last year's budget. So that means that the increases that we had hoped for are not there, but it's not dramatic. And the plans that the town had made, the financial, uh, hedging that we've made in case, uh, funding didn't come through from the state are proving to be satisfactory, uh, indeed more than satisfactory to meet that demand, at least based on this first three-year budget. And if that shows what the, uh, state's intent is to go forward if they don't receive for the federal funding. So at least as of the most, uh, current, uh, information on, uh, budgets and state aids, uh, we're in fairly good shape. We may have to use some of the funds we had hoped to use for other things to balance this year's budget, but that's part of the plan that we held back in case we had to face that reality. So the bottom line is, we're not in great shape, but we're not yet in bad shape. We're pretty much online. And, uh, I just wish the state would get its act together, not wait for state primaries or whatever to get over with, but in fact, uh, do their job. So if there's no other business, uh, I'll accept the motion to adjourn?
I was just, just wanted to add.
Mr. Lane? Mrs. Donahue?
Aye.
This, I'm sorry, Mr. Lane, do you have a comment? Your mo, your mic's on.
Moving. No, I think David had a, a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, David.
That's okay. Okay, but I just wanted to, uh, chime in on, uh, what you had said and, and what struck me, what, uh, State Rep. Rogers said that was disappointing, was that the state probably wouldn't have their full budget until October, which for a lot of cities in towns is pretty late in the game to make significant changes if the news is really bad. We don't know what that news is going to be, which is also very frustrating. But, uh, I concur with your comments that it looks like we're, we're going to do okay. Um, but if the news comes out in October where it's bad, we're not going to have a whole lot that we might be able to change, but I'm thinking a lot of, uh, free cash money to help, uh, out. So I hope it doesn't turn out that way. Thank you.
You know, the, the okay gets us by with this year's budget, but puts us really backwards because we're not able to continue to do some of the capital items and other projects, uh, that we'd like to do to set aside money for ongoing obligations like we talked about